All right, roll call and declaration of conflicts of interest.
Councilmember Abram, here and none. Councilmember Bixel?
Here and none.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Here and none.
Councilmember Moniz?
Here and none.
Mayor Booblaack?
Here and none.
Approval of agenda as posted or amended?
So moved.
We're motion two seconds and a third. We call the roll?
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Booblaack?
Yes. Passes five zero. Proclamation is National Public Works Week and... You got it, Eric? All right. Technical words are for you.
Good evening, honorable mayor, council, citizens. Tonight, we will be honoring National Public Works Week, which is May 21st through May 27th. Whereas, public works professional focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to the sustainability and resilience of communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of Turlock. And whereas, these infrastructures, facilities, and services cannot be provided without the dedicated effort of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste system, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for the citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for all citizens, civic leaders, and children of the city of Turlock to gain knowledge of and maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works program in their respective communities. Whereas, the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Amy Booblaack, by virtue of the authority vested in her as mayor of the city of Turlock, and on behalf of the entire city council and all the citizens, we do hereby designate the week, May 21st through 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association, government agencies, and activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contribution they make in protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. I would like to thank all of our city employees for the hard work and the professionalism they show every day. They truly make a difference in the way of life we have here in Turlock, and we all very much appreciate them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Qualls, please.
See if I can figure out how to use this thing. If I'd like to write a short little video for you, if I could. Hey, I did it. Okay. Good evening, honorable mayor, city council members, city staff, and members of the audience. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Stephen Qualls. I am your Central Valley Division Regional Public Affairs Manager for the League of California Cities. I'm here to urge the city council and remaining members of the League of California Cities, because I believe that we can accomplish more together than we can apart. CalCities is a leading advocacy voice for cities across California, and our membership has ultimate control over our policy and issues we focus on. We are also an educational resource for city officials at all levels. Many of Turlock's mayors, city council members, and staff have attended different professional development conferences over the years. In fact, I was glad to see that the city attorney took advantage of our conference last week. So, so League of California Cities provides different kinds of forms of advocacy. In 2022, CalCities filed 33 amicus briefs for our member cities, and at no cost to the cities. And of those, 13 were favorable rulings. CalCities has also authored many, has authored and passed ballot measures that protect local government property and gas taxes, which the state used to take with no reimbursement. As a member, all mayors, city council members, and staff are eligible to sit on one of seven policy committees. Caucuses are professional departments that help set policy for CalCities. They also are part of the decision-making process on which our stances are taken on legislation. Here are some of the results from the efforts of our member cities. Together with our members, CalCity delivers major victories for cities year after year, protecting local control, securing billions of dollars in new funding, and preserving existing city resources. We've been involved with over 100 bills and ballot measures passed or defeated to retain local control, $13 billion in new funding for cities in the past five years, and over $8 billion in federal and recovery funding in 2021. Here's what comes with your membership. Emails and other notifications on legislation that affects cities like Turlock. This offers the opportunity to become engaged and represent your city's perspective on legislation. Whether it's emails requesting your support on legislation, my reports during our division meetings, or my monthly city manager meeting reports, which I hope that you all had a chance to look at, this is just a small bit of the reporting out that I deal with city managers each month. I meet with the San Slaus County city managers, I meet with the San Joaquin city managers, I meet with the Reseda County city managers. We have three other counties, but there's only one city in East Los County, so there's no need to meet with the city managers there. I give updates on the bills we are tracking and some inside baseball on what's happening behind the scenes and how the members can help shape legislation. You can attend division meetings where you meet and speak, and some might say commiserate, with other fellow mayors and council members and exchange information and experiences. We also have speakers with helpful information that will help everyone be a better representative for their city. An example should be of special interest to the city of Turlock, since you have the distribution centers. Our city managers have a working sales tax group, and they are working to address the concerns about the distribution of internet sales tax. There have been times when member cities were in danger of missing out on funding, or not aware of approaching deadlines until they're notified by me via email. Just last week, only seven of our 25 member cities in our division had filed for the grants of between $40,000 and $100,000 to offset the cost of the solar app that is now required by new legislation. CalCity also offers free letter written by our lobbyists, who have intimate knowledge on the bills that are being sent, and they can be sent to your legislator. As a member of CalCities, the city of Turlock has access to numerous educational opportunities, including webinars and conferences at a reduced rate. One example is City Leaders Summit. It previously was called our Legisave Action Day. Now, I know you all have great work relationships with your legislators, but during Civic Leaders Summit, you not only team up, you not only learn what are the hot issues, but you are prepped with talking points, and we have strength in numbers because there are representatives from other cities that accompany you on our visits. If the city were to just send one representative to each of our conferences, the savings from your membership would be almost half of your yearly dues. Now, I'd like to share with you my own personal experience. Oops, sorry. Back to that. That's okay. That would be my next slide. So when I was on the Houston City Council, I was actually the first vice president for the Central Valley Division. And in doing so, I was involved in what they call League Leaders Conference. And that's where we have three representatives from each of our 16 divisions, and other members of our boards and our chairs of our policy committees. And they get together to set the advocacy priorities for the coming year. These are the guiding principles for our lobbying efforts. We break up into groups, we brainstorm, we set our, we try to decide what are the top three to four issues that we'd be facing the state or the cities in the coming year. Then we put it on butcher paper, we all come back in the same room, we rejoin up, and then we have the three-dot process. And the issues that get the most amount of dots are the issues that our lobbyists will focus on for the next year. This showed me that CalCities is a bottom-up organization. The priorities were set by the members, not by staff. And that's why, exactly why I decided to leave my job over 29 years to become a member of the CalCities team. Okay, let me back up that, sorry. Okay. So here's a little testimony I'd like to share with you, that I think the mayor makes a great personal observation on the value of the CalCity membership. CalCities, especially in the division level, provides a lot of great training for staff members and newly elected council members. When I was first elected in 2018, had the benefit of attending a series of orientations where CalCities really laid the groundwork for how to be a prospective council member. That was an incredible helpful resource to me. Now, what does the city and the citizens of Turlock have to lose if you were to not renew your membership? I know the city will still have access to some of the conferences and other education opportunities without being a member by simply paying a higher fee. But much like when I worked in a union shop, I had a choice of whether or not to be a member of the union. I chose to join the union. Because even though I, like the city of Turlock, will still reap the benefits of those negotiations if I were not a member of the union, without paying the dues, I wouldn't have a say in the discussions on the things that were most important to me and my family, and now they will the city of Turlock. They will not have a say. They may not even be aware of the discussions on legislation that will affect their families, the citizens of Turlock. Mayors and council members, I hope that you will continue to be part of CalCities and help us face the many challenges that face us in the coming years. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Qualls? Thank you so much.
How many years has Turlock been involved with CalCities?
I can only tell you it goes back as far as 2008, when I started. We recently, I asked that question, recently updated, they called the AMS system, and it only goes, only goes back to 2018. But I've been doing this since 2008, so I know it's been as long as, for, you know, 22 years. So again, I hope that you'll decide to remain a member of our organization. Between now and you do your, set your final budget, please feel free to reach out to me. I hope that maybe this has brought a little more information upfront for you to realize what the value of your membership is to League of California Cities, and I appreciate you letting me be here tonight.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Moreno, you're up.
By the way, I'd like to thank staff for helping me.
Honorable mayor, council members, tonight is another round of our budget presentation. Today, we'll be talking about the non-general funds. So I do have a PowerPoint we'll go through. This is a little different from what you see in the general fund. The general fund's presentation is a lot more detailed as far as what's in the general fund. There's a lot of different services and activities that you really have to go through. So this is a little more different approach in how we deal with it, because, yes, there's a lot of different funds, but the overall approach to them are kind of lumped into major funds like utilities and things of that nature. The remaining of them are impact fees, special services, and things like that. So really, we'll go through some of the high-level stuff, the bigger ticket dollar amounts that you'll see, and how they impact the overall. So, within the presentation, we will talk about explanation of non-general fund types, basically defining what that means. Major funds and activities. So we'll look at street funds, housing funds, and municipal services as a group. So we won't sing aloud individual funds. We'll look at them as a totality, and the augmentations that are currently being requested by staff. So, explanation of general funds and non-general, or non-general fund types. So special revenue funds is the first one. So there's a brief description here, and basically what it comes down to is, we're receiving funds from one type of entity that was restricted in some format, whether it's from the state or from the Fed, but it has a specific use and parameters in which it has to be defined and how it's utilized. So that's why we call it a special revenue fund. Proprietary funds are, in essence, type of a business activity. So in our site, a good example is the utility accounts. They're seen as a business type of entity. Although they're a government entity, they are currently have profit within their organization, and they can do so, utilize it for services. The next one is internal services. Internal services is really a gooder service that the city is performing, but the allocation and expenses are being allocated internally to all the other funds. For example, IT. IT touches all departments and all funds, but they allocate their services as appropriately so that they can expense it and spread it across how it's being utilized. Major funds. So we're going to group this up a little bit, and we're going to talk about three different components. The first one's going to be the street funds. So you can see you have multiple funds here ranging from 215 to 219, all of them having different parameters on how they're utilized. They are all street components, but they all have their own special nuances, how they can be utilized, whether it's gas tax, TDA, or measure L. They all have their own parameters in which we need to control them. But the end result is, they do lump into projects that we're utilizing for capital natures most of the time. And these funds are also utilized for maintenance. So when we talked about maintenance for the street funds and how the program works, your primary components are going to be in your gas tax, and in your SB1, which is 219. So just a lot of your labor is going to be built into there and how it can be utilized. Gas tax is a lot more flexible in that use and utilizing for services. We're the ones who could be a little more contrition in how we do that. So talking about the program itself, obviously, you can see we're not talking about measure A, because we already had that conversation. So that's a program in itself, but this is a caveat to that, right? So when we have federal grants, we have different things that are coming in, we're going to be utilizing these funds. As we start to taper up in the program, you'll see measure A start to pick up some of the maintenance component. But right now, we're focusing on capital as we transition through the program. So this slide shows your projects list of what the other funds as street components are going to be utilizing. Some of these are older projects that are just finishing up. Some of them are actually starting off and getting kicked off as far as energy and components. So this is basically the capital improvement plan for these funds. Not one in particular. They can be a mixture of funds. They can be, most likely be a federal grant they're receiving, but we're using, let's say, measure L as a match. So you're going to have multiple funding sources for most of these projects, especially as big as they go. The next department we're going to discuss is the housing department. We look at the housing department, the overall of all these combined funds and expenditures is about $18.5 million. So that's why I pulled it out in that sense of the way. It's merely the capacity and how much funds are actually generating through there. That doesn't mean that they're generating that much revenue. It's just that, that they have a plan to spend that dollar amount, because they have excess reserves, or they need to draw it down from HUD to be able to do so. So the responsibilities of this entities is certainly for affordable housing opportunities, community funding, and to deal with HUD. Program activities are actually identified by the annual action plan and brought to council. Municipal services. Municipal services is the big one that everybody knows, right? This is your water, your sewer funds. Although they have multiple funds, they have the recycled water program too, as well, their purple pipe, and other things that are going on as well as maintenance and construction. This overall fund itself is a total of expenditures. If you look at all of them that are listed here, about $80 million. Our overall total fund, our total expenditures for all funds is about $255. So you can see they're addressing a big piece of the overall, big picture. Even our general fund is only about 59, right? So this gives you a brief overview of what municipal service has done. Again, primarily working into the water and sewer side of it, but they're not just that. They also deal with the storm drain components and things of that nature. So they have a vice for a wide range of variety of duties that they do throughout the city to make sure the utility component actually works together. Onto the fun stuff. Augmentations. So within the augmentation list, we do the same practice. We go through the, we go through the department meetings, see what their requests are, we look what the budget is, what we can and can't afford, we sit down with the city manager, say, okay, this is where we're at, what we're requesting. One, what can we afford? Two, what must logical sense, and what we can talk about at a later point, or maybe we need to make some different actions and how that all plays out. So within the document and the budget book, we talked about multiple things, but the first one we're going to talk about is a fleet division reorganization. In a summary essence, without going through this whole thing, what we're looking to do is propose a division change. So we still want to propose a fleet division, but actually shift it from the municipal services, which, as we just talked about, is really utility-based, and switch it into the public works, which is, has a wide variety of utilities in which they do for fleets. One of the biggest components that actually talks about this from a fleet's standpoint is going to be your transit. Transit is a heavy component of fleet services. And why I say that is because some of your utility, your vehicles, let's say, utility vehicles or things of that nature, don't have to deal with transportation as far as the public. They really have a vast, large legislation factor they have to deal with, which is coming from DOT, Department of Transportation. They get annual inspections, certifications, they have a wide variety of fleet issues they have to deal with. Not just that, they also have a wide variety of grants, as well as a wide variety of filling systems that they have to deal with, whether they're CNG, looking to the future for electric, or hydrogen, or whatever that may be. So from a fleet standpoint, put it into the public works, and looking at that factor and how it looks like, we're proposing to do that. So to accomplish this, this is what the org chart looks like. So you're shifting it down into public works. You still have your deputy director, but the thing you, we're now proposing two positions to make sure that we kind of solidify, to make sure the workload is achievable. So what we're proposing right now is a fleet manager, which is one position, as well as a fleet mechanic addition, which is a number two level, so one more position. So again, for the reorganization to, so we can get it to, it's manageable overall, there is two positions proposed that you see here, as well as some additional infrastructure dollar amounts, really to make sure that they can accommodate the new staff, whether that it be desk, or really what they're looking at as a reorganization of the space. They're cramped as they are, so they really need to restructure that site. This is a high estimate. We don't know what it's going to cost. We really need to really do a space format, but it's better to bid a dollar amount and get it out there instead of coming back and ask for additional dollars. So is there any questions or comments about this item before we move on?
I have a question. How many vehicles are in our fleet?
250? And that was a 22, as a 22.
And how many mechanics, mechanics two, do we currently have?
Yeah, let's go back to the org chart. So you currently have one senior in place, one mechanic number two, and two number ones. And then you have some part-time individuals as well.
Those are all full-time employees?
Those are all full-time. You have two part-time individuals at the bottom.
And we're proposing to do one more mechanic and then the fleet manager.
Correct. With the expansion of the fleet, especially in the transit, and like I proposed, it's going to take on more.
So when you said 250, that was excluding fire vehicles?
That's correct. Oh, I'm sorry, that is part of that account, but that is outsourced. Fire is a really small component, because they don't have a large fleet, but that is a totality.
Right. But I still, it's a very special place. We don't work on our own fire. It's like Disneyland.
Trust me, you don't want to. The certifications are, bang. Especially the pumps and things of that nature. It really takes a special individual that has the certifications to do so.
Any other questions? All right.
Okay. Moving forward. Transit code enforcement. So you can see transit pop through tonight. So we do have a lot of activity going within the transit fund. What we're looking at here is basically a joint effort between the police department, as well as the transit department. And what we're looking to do is allocate an expense of $90,000 for 20 hours of service from a code enforcement individual, right? So what this looks like is, basically, the service is going to be to be able to assist with vagrants at bus stops, and transportation needs, and amenities that are out through city, kind of visit them, make sure the accessibility, everything is done, people are not loitering, so that we can make our transit locations and stops, including the transit center, more palatable for individuals, will feel more secure, so that we're not having any other activities, with the intent to increase ridership. So the police department, with this impact, basically, they'll receive a revenue stream of, an offset of $90,000 to take on that. Because what we'll be doing is billing the code enforcement officer a fully burdened rate. Traditionally, how we do, most of our entities are billed back to each other in existence. So they'll receive a revenue stream. And their recommendation is utilize that revenue stream to actually, to increase services within the animal control division, and request a rescue coordinator at a part-time position. So yes, they're taking on the $90,000, but they're going to utilize primarily that as a net wash for a part-time individual.
Does that include the DOT cert that they have to have, whoever works it, if you, if you work within there, you have to pee on command and all that kind of stuff?
For which individual?
For police officers, any officer that works within transit center has to?
They'll be working for transit, more of as a special services. They're not, they're not touching the bus system. They're really just visiting sites and making sure more of a security and presence aspects of it. So no, I don't believe they would have a DOT, but...
Is this in place of the security service that we have now, or in addition to?
In addition to. That's why it's in only 20 hours. We're not looking for a full-time individual to do this. It's more to kind of get into a routine, get the information, or get the visualization out there, so that we can combat that.
I have a question, maybe more for the chief. I apologize for not asking this ahead of time, but is, is the transit and the bus stops, is it a high-call situation for our code enforcement as it is now? Are we going to be transferring hours that that code enforcement officer is spending elsewhere in the community with this, or is it kind of an even wash, if that makes sense?
Probably an even wash. This is more to give those bus stops attention from code enforcement. They're dealing a lot with the homeless community, cleanups. They'll spend some time at the transit center, but more of a wash. We think that with the full staff that we have in code enforcement now, that we can support it, and we want to use those funds to support animal control.
And as you can see from his discussion, we're primarily doing it already, right? So these are activities that are currently in performance. We're more solidifying and creating the program.
If, so I understand the numbers, you're saying approximately 20 hours a week for $90,000 annually?
Correct.
So it's halftime. If it was full-time, it'd be $180,000 expenditure?
So at a fully burdened rate, what it is, it's salary's benefit also has an overhead factor, so that, that rate increases. So don't think of it as just, there's my base number as far as my salary and all my benefits. It's salary benefits and also an overhead factor to make sure we capture everything. And this is a common practice throughout the city. Okay. Moving on. So this is the remainder of the augmentation list. We'll start working through it and get your feedback. So again, starting with transit and the public works, we do have some reclassifications that are currently being proposed, and create a new series of transit job analysts. So you can see that it's only a small dollar amount. Basically, we're creating tiers and train to, as the transit department starts to grow and continue to grow, create those layers so that people with expertise can continue to grow. The next one is a full-time position. It is a supportive position administrative in operation, and the transit division basically identified as a transit analyst. So this position is a full-time employee and is new. Next one again, is a reclassification of the transit managers, just a pay scale change, and keeping it up with more of where the standard is. The next one is something you've actually seen before, the communications assistant. This is actually just another part of where the funding source is for this individual. You saw in the other portion in the general fund presentation. So you're going to see this throughout some of these augmentation lists, but it's just because we're spreading that individual's cost. The last one for transit is basically contract services. So the additional services that On-Demand Mode is requesting to be able to create efficiencies and route, and create more overall parameters around the program and how they utilize their professional services. Is there any questions on the transit component? Okay. The next one, straightforward. This is the assessment districts. Basically, what we're doing is kind of a shifting here. We're looking at our part-time employees and realizing that our budget for part-time is, really needs to be shifted into a full-time. So to be able to create a full-time is a lot more efficient. You can create sustainability within your staff levels. Part-timers come and go. It's a lot harder, difficult to manage a full-time shift like that. So we're shifting and downgrading our part-time expense and creating a new position. That's why, where you see for those, that dollar amount is 52. The fully rate would be higher than that. Seeing no questions, we will move on. So the next one is municipal services. Municipal services has quite a few little items. The first one is the same we talked about, the communications assistants. The first one is the same we talked about, the communications assistant. There is one full-time position in here for staff service assistant to assist with regulatory needs. The remainder of the items are basically around reclassifications, increase in overtime, and the large one for one point one million is really because of the cost increase in materials. They've literally jumped almost fifty percent or more. It has been a drastic increase. Yeah, we're really having to absorb that. It's why I'm talking municipal services, and so why we need to do a rate study to see what that looks like. When you had that large jump, we need to regroup. So overall, you'll see what those total costs are of the reclassification. And we also have our conversion of one individual for electric and technicals to a senior in special control. Is there any questions for municipal services? Okay. Moving forward. The last sheet here that you see is really just a reclassification in which we already talked about. So within the general fund, we make allocations into what we call the small equipment fund and the vehicle fund. So we talked about these augmentations in the general fund coming from different departments, and really just allocating it to where it needs to go into their equipment vehicle funds, so they can allocate that money, utilize it as they need it throughout the years. So is there any other questions?
Question on that last point. So for these last two items, you know, two of them are related to fire. Is this fulfilling the, I believe, the capital improvement program that the City Gate study was saying that we should, you know, plan for those?
So it's attempting to.
That we're going to be talking about tonight?
So when we sat down with fire, we really had a hard conversation on what their fleet needs. And obviously, the City Gate was a driving force of it. We really had to restructure and what our plan looks like, and this is trying to get that attempt. So we really had to set dollars aside to be able to afford that program. We'll have a mixture of how we do things, but this is an attempt to get us those monies in the pot. So when we need to make those transactions, we can do so. And I will say that fire is also looking at different grant opportunities to try and make sure they can do that too as well, just to.
How'd that boot drive go? You didn't get enough to cover it?
So do you see this increase to, I think I read somewhere where it's, you know, this is an increase of two hundred thousand to like four hundred thousand total?
So fire actually requested a larger amount, and we had to reduce it in the general fund. It was more like an eight hundred thousand dollar request. And we reduced it down to like four or three. So they had a larger dollar amount originally requested in order to balance the general fund, we really had to reduce it.
Do you foresee that four thousand dollars, something that we can carry forward, so we have that?
At this point, yes. We'll continue to try and grow it as we had the budget conversations again. Again, really trying to see if they can look to grants to get things done. But with the overall change in carb and the emissions and things of that nature, they're going to see changes within their fleet. Not just that, they've seen drastic changes in their overall costs for fleet, and you're going to see that tonight, right? I mean, we used to purchase these trucks for a lot less than what you're currently seeing. The time delays are really killing us. So we really have to do forward-thinking in a sense of the way, where we're now looking to purchase vehicles ahead of time, with the understanding we're not going to get them for a couple of years.
Well, I appreciate seeing that in the budget, so, you know, future councils, eight years down the road, don't have to sacrifice on equipment because of financial situations, so thank you for that.
I'm a good fan of trying to put these programs together. You can do it different ways, financing or whatever it may be. The best way is to start scrolling money away, so that when you need to make these purchases, you can get there. You have to readjust with inflation factors and what the market looks like, so that number changes every year. But that's the practice that we do and how we keep this fund afloat. The first thing, when things start to struggle, is you're going to see this program get cut. And what happens? We come to you and say, we need to borrow money because we need to get a truck. And so really, we try to strain away from that and build our reserves and our equipment and be able to maintain it.
That is a separate fund from your reserve fund, correct?
That is correct. So basically, what you see is a transfer out from our general fund, from those departments that are utilizing or requesting it, into these funds here, so it's basically a set aside. And they have capital improvement plans tied around these numbers. So we sit down and look at that whole program every year. That concludes my presentation. As you can see, we went through high level, not a lot of augmentations overall. We really just touched on the big funds, which is your utilities and where it's going. So from a utility aspect too, I am happy to say that we did squirrel away some money in there to be able to get some programs as far as the capital improvement side for the water mains. The water mains is important because it is impacting the overall roads program. So we're able to set that money aside so that we can stay parallel to the roads from and continue to look forward. That concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, this is time for public participation, and it's items that are within our subject matter jurisdiction. Three minutes will be assigned, and I do have some cards filled out. We'll start with Antonio Aguilar. Please come right up here, sir.
This is my first time, so I was hoping not to be the first one, but thank you for that. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, but first of all, I want to thank the council and the mayor for giving me the opportunity to address you tonight. My name is Antonio Aguilar. I am a trustee for Modesto's Junior College. But today, I'm representing Pittman High School Band Booster. I'm a board member.
Oh, there you go.
So about September, last September, Mr. Modesto, the bandleader, decided to start a mariachi band. So they started playing and rallies and practicing half an hour a week, because it's still not part of the curriculum. We're working on that. So after nine months practicing here and there, last Friday, we had our first mariachi concert, that it was, I heard it was a success. And I want to thank the mayor for honoring with her presence. And it was just amazing to see the kids, that probably most of them, I don't know, they probably did not know who you were, but they were amazed to see, why is the mayor here? And they were so proud that the mayor was there to see them play. So I'm here, first of all, to thank you and to, you guys represent the city. So I wanted to kind of bring a little information to what's going on. And one of the reasons I decided to come, because I am so proud of these kids, because in the age of TikTok and everything, my son started two years ago playing the guitar, and he loved music, he never listened to any Spanish music whatsoever. Well, two years later, he plays in the jazz band, he plays in the mariachi, and he is like the biggest fan. And to me, it's just wonderful to see the young people embracing our culture. So I am here, first of all, because of our success, we have some problems now.
Tell us.
Well, we have some requests and invitation to perform in different places, high places, and we don't have uniforms. So I'm here as to kind of bring a little attention to this. And we're working with Turlock to make it a part of the curriculum. And I think we're going to be able to do that, so the kids could practice more than half an hour a week. But I'm just here, I have some information if you want, if you guys would like to help us out in the future. And here, just to let the community know that we have a mariachi on our high school, and they sound amazing.
Perfect. Thank you, I have some information.
I have a question.
Oh, and if you have questions, I'm here.
So I didn't know you were going to be here tonight. Actually, I'm glad to hear that you are looking for money para los uniformes de la mariachi. Because the mariachi is so important to our Mexican and Latina culture. And we need this, and I hope Turlock Unified makes it a part of the curriculum. I actually brought a check for you guys tonight. I was going to give it to my city manager, not knowing that I was getting sandbagged and you were going to be here. So would you please take this for Pittman boosters? Because we need it, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next, Ms. Library, Ms. Vindonsa.
Hi.
That's a hard act to follow. Okay, let's see, we started back with storytime this month. We actually added another storytime, so we have a storytime Thursdays at ten and eleven. Before our last session, I met with our children's librarian, Michelle Coxford, and said, okay, storytime is not working for one reason, it's too popular. We had eighty-five people and we're having to turn people away because we cannot accommodate that many little ones. And it's a good problem to have. So we've now switched to two sessions at ten AM and eleven AM, still very popular. We've been slightly understaffed for medical reasons, so I've been doing storytime. So this Thursday is going to be my last storytime ever, hopefully, knock on someone. I've done storytime for years, I absolutely love it. But my last storytime was February of 2020, and I was one hundred percent okay with that, until I had to fill in, of course. But it's great, it's basically about twenty-five minutes of books, stories, you know, music, movements. It's a blast. Let's see, we started our summer reading program, started, launched last Tuesday, it's completely online. We do a gamification type of program where zero to eighteen-year-olds, they can read every day, thirty minutes. They log it in, after thirty minutes, after thirty days, they get a brand-new book for free that they get to keep. Throughout the time, they also earn virtual badges and entries to win prizes. So there's some amazing prizes like gift cards, Nintendo Switch, all kinds of stuff. Adults can participate too. So if you're interested, there's also a Nintendo Switch for grownups, zero to eighteen, just saying. Adults don't normally enter, so your odds of winning are fabulous. And with that, you just read a book, log it, say you read it. If you want to earn a bonus prize or a bonus entry, you just say if you liked it or not.
Does it just count?
Yes, and that's all through our Beanstack app. And then also, last year, our Parks Pass program was extremely popular, there was huge waitlists. We contacted the state library and the state parks, and they said, we'll give you more, how many do you need? We kind of, our county librarian gave them an off-the-wall number, thinking they're not going to give us this, they did. So right now, we have over twenty park passes just waiting to be checked out at the Turlock Library.
Nice.
And they check out for two weeks, great time. I say, go up to big trees, visit for free. And then again, if R20 checkout, there's a lot available countywide that we can just request for you. It just takes a couple of days, and that's it for me.
Great, thank you so much. Milt?
Good evening, Milt Treeweiler. I attended the State of the City address last week and thought it was a pretty good show. It was well-done, but not exactly based on facts and reality. One statement, McClintock Bank was not based on facts, however, that was good. Here's what McClintock said, quote, "And the fact that this city's population continues to grow while other cities shrink," end quote. The fact is, other cities in the area have grown faster than Turlock's, but not growing in size should be our goal. We are living in the best farmland in the world. The wisest thing we can do is preserve our farmland. The planet we live on is finite in size, it is basically the same size it was a million years ago. We're not getting more farmland on the earth. Sadly, we're losing farmland at a record rate because of population growth and climate change. It is very wise for the city of Turlock to build it up and not over the farmland surrounding our city. Stanislas County is the only county in the valley that will have plenty of water for irrigation for the next one hundred years. Turlock and the Modesto irrigation districts have planned that out. Once farmland is built on, it can never be recovered. The fact and reality is, we need to save this prime farmland surrounding our city. Please look at the handout. In 2018, the city's former municipal services director, Michael Cook, informs council of possible cost recovery for well treatment as the lawsuits against Shell and Dow for not properly disposing of TCP, a byproduct of Dow and Shell's pesticides as a hazardous waste. So here we have, five years later, instead of suing Shell and Dow, we city ratepayers have to pay to remove this contaminant from our groundwater. The city of Lowdi announced that it settled a lawsuit with the city brought against Shell Oil and the Dow for contaminating groundwater with TCP. Sold Shell and Dow for several decades in California. Dow and Shell and several other distributors agreed to pay the city of Lowdi thirty-two million dollars to remove TCP from wells before water is delivered to the public. The city attorney, this settles a preserved city ability to pursue further damages should wells be contaminated later. This settlement would ensure the parties responsible for TCP contamination and not the innocent taxpayers or ratepayers of Lowdi will pay to remove the TCP from the city's water, said the city manager. Although the contamination should never have happened, we're pleased that Shell and Dow have taken the responsibility for the contamination and agreed to pay the costs of removing contamination. And I simply ask Mayor Blue Black, why didn't Turlock sue Dow and Shell so that our ratepayers don't have to pay such high rates for our water to put these wellhead treatments on our plants, or on our wells?
Michael?
American resolve in just five minutes or less, special events. To the President of the United States of America, Commander in Chief, to the President of the Boy Scouts of America, Roger C. Mosby, thank you both for being with us. When I last saw you, by Mariah Carey is my first song request. Keep my rank of Life Scout near two thousand and one and for a lifetime. As a certified TV director, you both are all I know. With the pandemic and the Olympic boycott, life has never been so reflective. We all just have one life to live. The lives of our presidents come first. Happy birthday to all the tourists out there, manifold witness, inspired by Ford and a bunch of lifesavers. My heart goes out to all the emergency responders everywhere. My birthday is the seventeenth, I am celebrating with a week-long birthday starting on the fifteenth and ending on the twenty-second, hence, Troop Twenty-One, Troop Twenty-Two. I will be turning thirty-nine, long suffering is promising, and so are all our endeavors. Hello to the ISS from Earth, Venus, the gods of love is our ruler. NASA, thank you for double-checking. Jesus once said that one day you shall point to the mountain and it shall move. Thank God I found you, by Mariah Carey, is my rank of second-class request. To all that gaze toward the night skies, thank you to Stanislas State Observatories, you can't beat the lows. The Astronomy Meribatch just won't quit, and to the Natural Sciences, another Meribatch I have. This is what got me started. The year is nineteen eighty-nine, and the world's most visible earthquake in history happened at the magnitude of six point nine on the Erector Scale. At that same time, my family and I were safely upon the Space Mountain ride in Disneyland. When the ride stopped, we waited fifteen minutes to be ushered out safely. My father, Michael, my mother, Anola, my sister, Michelle, and I, Michael, rushed back to Emmanuel's area to help in any way that we could. As time passed on, only sixty-three lives were lost yet found. The World Series continued, and so does the World Meribatch. Reverence to all that have been lost this year. May all the angels continue to rain, anything for Anaheim, and I've word of pray. We prayed for rain and the eagles rejoice. To Jennifer Hudson, I just love life, and I know you do too. My next song request is O Santa by Mariah Carey. God hits surprises, love Michael Way, Christmas tree lane, Michael Way, centers in the center of Turlock. I'm requesting that the month of December of two thousand and twenty-three, there be a seventy-five percent off TID, including cul-de-sacs. I only mayors from holiday. Peace was declared in December of nineteen forty-seven, when President Joe Biden boycotted the Olympics in Japan, that tells me Christmas must endure. Thank you to all the members of Turlock, thank you to the members of state. Thank you to all the members of the United States of America, and thank you to Mount Mariah, and thank you to Space Mountain. To Afirm, Mount Arad, we get Thanksgiving. My next reading will be dedicated primarily to National Volunteer Day, which encompasses three hundred and sixty-five days a year. For example, Earth Day is a perfect day for volunteer saplings.
Thank you. Anyone who didn't fill out a card, wish to speak? Ramon?
Good evening, man, mayor, council, and members of the public. Tonight, I'm going to speak about the Monte Vista crossings and why that spot, because the empty land plots over there, it's a good spot for affordable housing that needs to be built. And also having affordable housing near the Monte Vista Crossing will provide a perfect opportunity for people to shop, as well as getting to work and to commute. Also, at the same time, reducing the cars, because every time at that area of Monte Vista and countryside, there's always so many cars lined up, especially on weekends. And I've seen this many times because I work at a grocery store. And that's why I brought up the attention, because that land's been sitting here for years. And that land is a prime, perfect prime candidate for building housing, so that people will stay in Turlock and contribute to the economy and work. so that people will stay in Turlock and contribute to the economy and work. And, you know, getting around to the shopping areas closer without having to drive. And also, for the homeless issue, I missed out a council meeting, because it was, uh, a lot of debate, but we need to have a community, uh, town hall event before we move on to the $10 million, uh, housing on Walnut Street and let the community know what their, their opinions, what we can do about it. Because we cannot rush without letting the community know. But also, we need to understand that homeless crisis is not like an easy solution. It'll be extremely hard to tackle. And I've been in Modesto council meeting and heard about that they're moving on with their plans to combat homelessness, including having a day program within their city limits. And also, I read an article in MSN that now, uh, senior homeless, homeless seniors are now the fastest-growing demographics in homelessness. And that is a really, really hard topic. And then, I mean, it'll be challenging for every level of government. So this issue of homelessness, we need to tell the state government, the federal government, as well as the county government, that we, that they needed, uh, to help us, because we cannot do it all. We need to do something for the homeless, especially those who are beyond their help with their mental illness, as well as people who really need our help, because they've been out in the streets for years, and we need to help. Because if we don't do it, how many people are gonna, uh, gonna be, uh, it's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else who didn't fill out a card? Kristan?
Uh, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Kristan Santos, representing the office of Congressman John Duarte. Our office was honored to join you, Congressman Tom McClintock, representatives from local Turlock faith organizations, and local leaders for the state of the city last week. We look forward to being a part of the bright future and story here for Turlock. Today, we are excited to announce that earlier this morning, we moved our first bill out of the Transportation Infrastructure Committee in Washington, DC. The Supply Chain Improvement Act, introduced by Congressman Duarte, ensures that priority consideration for Department of Transportation investments is given to projects that would improve or build resiliency into the supply chain through the infra and mega discretionary grant programs. Improving our supply chain means affordable gas, cheaper groceries, and a stronger economy for Valley families. Congressman Duarte is also working across the aisle with Democratic Congressman Ruben Gallego of Arizona to introduce the Water Infrastructure Modernization Act, which invests $50 million to bring clean and affordable water to our families, farms, and small businesses. This bill supports community water systems, innovative technologies, and storage systems. And this past National Police Week, Congressman Duarte was honored to join his colleagues and pass a series of bills supporting the brave men and women in law enforcement. These bills protect officers' rights of due process and honor those who have sacrificed their lives to keep us all safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, so I, I was at the, uh, the last State of the City, and I thought you gave a wonderful address, so thank you for that. And, um, I was proud to represent, uh, Turlock Historical Society on my shoes. It was a, it's a really fun thing to do, so I appreciate that. It made the event way better, in my opinion. And then also, um, uh, what is it, Stan Cog has been doing the Love to Ride event, and, uh, my dad and I decided to participate in that. So I've so far, I biked 10 miles throughout this month, and my dad, being the champ that he is, he decided to bike to work, and he works all the way in Merced for the junior college. So he's biked 50 miles, so I just wanted to shout him out for that. That's really impressive, I thought. So I, I just wanted to give props to my dad for that, because that's just really impressive. He's outshining everybody. But yeah, that's, that's about it. So thank you, City Council.
Anyone else? Okay, we will close the public comment and bring it back for a motion waiving reading of all ordinances on the agenda except by title.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Blue Black?
Yes. Passes 5-0. The Senate calendar, uh, any items to be considered separate or adopted as is?
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Blue Black?
Yes. Passes 5-0. Final readings, uh, second and final reading of the ordinance repealing, um, mini-code, title six, uh, three, chapter three, Article Two, Section 203. Um, I'll open it to the public once. Anybody wishing to speak regarding this final reading? Okay, I'll close public comment. Uh, Mr. Moreno, is there anything you wanted to cover? Any questions for Mr. Moreno on this?
The changes you've seen before you, or the what's came out of the last meeting, so?
Okay. What is the will of, move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Thank you.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Blue Black?
Yes. Passes 5-0. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moreno. It took longer for you to walk, then. Public hearings, uh, item 7A is introduction and first reading of an ordinance approving a development agreement by, uh, by and between the city of Turlock and Flavor Farms. And Ms. Warner? Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members and members of the public. The item before you tonight is the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to approve a development agreement between the city of Turlock and Flavor Farms Turlock to operate an indoor cannabis cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution business at 680 D Street, which is the former Valley Fresh location. Um, if you recall, in June of 2019, the council adopted the ordinance establishing a regulatory structure for cannabis businesses. While the ordinance required retail cannabis businesses to submit an RFQ by July 12, 2019, and limited the number of retail, um, cannabis dispensaries to four, um, other cannabis uses such as cultivation were not limited and are reviewed as, as the application is submitted. So the property that, uh, at 680 D Street, um, that, uh, is Flavor Farms is proposing to operate is, is zoned for industrial use. It is surrounded by industrial uses also. Um, the location has been used as manufacturing and warehousing before, um, uh, with Valley Fresh and afterwards. So the development agreement, um, before you tonight would, um, also require that if the, at the will of the council, if they do approve the development agreement, that a, a conditional use permit be, um, submitted also. Flavor Farms did submit an application for the development agreement in February. They have submitted an application to the Planning Department for the conditional use permit pending, um, the decision of the development agreement tonight. At the April 6, 2023 Planning Commission, meaning the Planning Commission did recommend that the city council approve the development agreement between Flavor Farms and the city of Turlock to operate the indoor cannabis, um, business. And that was a six-to-zero vote with one, um, Commissioner absent. So tonight, the proposed agreement is for a five-year term and would require that Flavor Farms, uh, have the, a, a public benefit amount based on the cultivation canopy size and a manufacturing area. Uh, Flavor Farms proposes to have an approximately 35,000-square-foot cultivation canopy, which is the area where the cultivation would be done, and 5,000 square feet of manufacturing area. Those areas will be kind of really solidified once, um, uh, they apply for their conditional use permit and we go forward with that. So we'll know exactly what their cultivation canopy is and their, their, uh, manufacturing area. If the development agreement is approved by council tonight, um, as I said, the, the conditional use permit will go forward, um, to the Planning Commission. And I think that's all I have for you tonight. If anybody has any questions?
Questions for Ms. Warner? No? Okay. Oh, you do.
Oh, I had questions that I asked, uh, Ms. Quintero, but maybe I should voice them now so you guys can hear what my questions were, and, um, the answers, uh, can come from, from Ms. Quintero. I had heard that this could possibly be the same property as the, uh, JDI property. That was kind of the scuttlebutt around town, um...
They are two separate properties. JDI is operating, uh, well, they do have their development agreement, and a conditional use permit were approved for 600D Street, which is next door to the, this, right.
And they are currently not operational?
JDI Farms is not operational right now. They are still going through the, um, plan check process to get their, their improvements done.
And when, um, does their, uh, development agreement, uh, expire?
The development agreement and the conditional use permit are going forward to the Planning Commission as an annual review. Um, so the, as the development agreement, I believe the five-year term would be 2024 for the expiration of the development agreement. But all development agreements and conditional use permits are going to the Planning Commission for their annual review in June.
And question for the ad hoc committee. When is your next meeting? Sorry.
We, um, I just got word today that we have a meeting that has not been noticed, but will be June 21st, I believe, right?
Okay. I'm sure I have more, but that's all for right now.
Okay. Any other questions before I open it to public? Okay, let's open it to public. Would Mr. Flavor like to come up and talk?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Mike Duarte here. I'm just representing, um, uh, the group here. I've got Jose Rodriguez, who's one of the principals of the project. And yes, it's a completely unrelated project to, um, JDI, JD Farms. It's, it's, uh, operating next door at 600. It's pretty straightforward. I think the bigger lift for us will be the conditional use permit process. We're currently set, I think in July, to appear before the Planning Commission. And, um, I anticipate that we'll probably be faced with the same conditions that we're immediately next door. We, pretty much the same conditions, same neighborhood, same, similar size building. So I don't, I don't really see anything being different. But if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Questions for the applicant? So you're not Mr. Flavor?
Right, no. Thank you.
Anyone wishing to, Mel?
Um, I remember when JDI went in, there's always an issue with, uh, the water. Uh, they have a lot of water flowing through. They have a lot of wastewater with a lot of chemicals in it, and it's very expensive to clean those out. I think with JDI, they are actually removing the chemicals and taking them off to a different location, so I hope it'll be the same here. We're not going to allow these, this, uh, industry to come in and, uh, you know, they need to pay for what they need to do. I can't, they can't dump additional chemicals into our sewer lines, because it costs us money, the ratepayers money, to take care of their problems, and that's not the way it worked with JDI. JDI is taking care of all the problems regarding the wastewater. And I do remember that I, I mean, I do remember, think I remember that they have to actually condense those products and take them off the site, so that they don't go in our sewer system and cause the ratepayers of Turlock to have to pay additional money to treat those. So I want to make sure that that is something that's done in this next agreement, uh, that we save or work for the taxpayers, I mean, work for us, yes, the ratepayers of the water and sewer system, and not have some industry come in and have the ratepayers of Turlock take care of their issues. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak regarding this item? Before I close, would you care to answer the, are you gonna dump chemicals? When's the last time you beat your wife?
I haven't been able to find her. I don't know what happened to her. Yeah, yeah, these, these operations actually recycle most of the water, very little discharge. Uh, and I know that it will be a condition that is part of the conditional use permit process. It's not addressed at, at this stage, but it will be addressed in the conditional use permit process.
All right, I'm gonna close public comment, bring it back. Um, other thoughts?
I know with the ad hoc committee meeting, um, they could or could not have, you know, other, other items to bring forward on this. Our original pilot program, uh, was supposed to be five years. That five-year term never got into our pilot program, so it's an open-ended pilot program. But it was promised to the public as a five-year program. This is giving a new entity another five years. So I'd kind of like to hear from the ad hoc committee, wh- what do they think our program should be? Should we throw out the old pilot program, bring into, you know, being another program? Or are we gonna overhaul it, or are we gonna throw it out altogether? I, I'd like to hear from the ad hoc before we come up and, and give someone another five-year program. This just isn't quite sitting well with me. Um, two growing businesses side by side, uh, it's kind of saturation. The first one still has rights through November of 2024. I, I, I still would like to hear from the ad hoc before, before this decision, uh, came to us. So I, I mean, I don't know if we can, we can do that, but I, I have a problem approving something when we've got so much sitting out there and a program that needs to be revamped.
Yeah, so we have not had, um, public meetings of the ad hoc committee because, um, of some different determination of if we are Brown, Brown Act body. Um, but I can tell you that I have been working diligently with staff and researching and, um, and, you know, trying to understand the landscape of cannabis, the industry, and best practices. Um, and I respectfully disagree that we should not hold up this process, that we've already, this council has already laid out. Um, because the ad hoc committee has a lot of work to do, and I, I don't think, I, I don't think it would be a fair ask of that committee to say that we're gonna be able to figure it all out after our June 21st meeting. Um, my intention for that, that committee was really to, you know, we, we've heard from the city manager and the city attorney on, these are the top priority items, but I want to make sure that we're making good policy, looking at all different aspects of it. So my anticipation is that coming out of that committee, there will be several different, um, things that we're going to be addressing. Um, I, I do not think that, I do not think that waiting on our work product, um, is fair to the applicant.
Other thoughts? Okay, well, is there a motion to be made?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
No.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Blue Black?
No. It passes with a 3-2. Thank you, and good luck at the, uh, Planning Commission. All right, um, item 7B is approving a no change in the cap on the number of beds that may be permitted under the nondiscretionary permit process with the SB2 Emergency Shelter Overlay District. Ms. Quintero?
Good evening, Mayor, um, members of the community and staff. Uh, the item before the council tonight is the annual review of the current cap of 200 beds that may be permitted under the nondiscretionary permit process for the emergency shelter beds located within the adopted emergency shelter overlay district. There are currently 129 beds permitted within this overlay district, leaving a capacity for an additional 71 beds that could be permitted through the nondiscretionary permit process. And so at this time, there is not a recommendation to change the cap, uh, but I am here to answer any questions you may have on this item.
Questions for Ms. Quintero? Okay, let's open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak regarding this item? Closing the public comment, bring it back. What is the will of council?
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Blue Black?
Yes. Passes 5-0. Thank you for that, Ms. Quintero. All right, uh, next one's yours as well. Action item 8A, approving an agreement between CDBG and city of Turlock.
Yes, uh, good evening tonight. Before the council, our various, um, agreements for the proposed use of the CDBG funds for the public service agreements. Um, it, within CDBG, there's a maximum allowable, um, that can be spent of 15% of our annual CDBG allocation, plus 15% of our pro- allocation plus 15% of our program income from the previous year. So it is estimated that we could spend a maximum of $161,683,000 on public services. The recommendations before you are, were reviewed by the CDBG selection committee. All of the agencies that applied were recommended for funding. And so before you are the recommendations. The emergency payment, the, that NOFA was sent out later, so we do have two applicants. They will be reviewed by the CDBG committee and then brought forward for a separate contract for that agency to administer that. The fair housing services, we did not receive any applicants to administer that program. We are required to provide fair housing, and so we will be looking to see what we can do to get an agency on board to provide fair housing. So we do have that in there to keep that placeholder, that is funding that we need to spend in that capacity, but we need to go back out. We have had some discussions with Santa Claus County to see if there's potential to pull our funds together to maybe make it more enticing for an agency to provide services if there was something done more countywide. So we are looking at that. So there is not a specific agreement for that, but looking to keep that funding as a placeholder.
When the money's not used, for example, fair housing, does it roll over to something else, or how's that work?
It will, would, could roll over potentially then into next year's, but would, is allocated in the annual action plan for public services, so it'd stay in this category unless we had went, brought something forward to them in the annual action plan.
Other questions?
Regarding the fair housing, have we had a service provider for that in the past?
Yes, we have had a service provider before. Through the monitoring, there have been some issues with compliance as far as reporting. And so we've been working with them to come into compliance. I believe that is why they did not apply for this round of funding. And with not being in good standing with our monitoring and reporting, we would not be able to award them either. And so that is, I think, an issue that other agencies are having as well with that service provider. And so we're not alone in looking at ways to provide this service.
I do have a question. So all the other entities here are in compliance? They've already done all their?
Yes.
Compliance paperwork? We've already audited them and they're all?
Correct. Yes, they have all done their monitoring and been in compliance. We've checked federal and state tax status and they are all in compliance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, let's open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak about this item at the lectern? Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back. A motion and a second. We call the rule, please.
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Monas?
Yes.
Mayor Bublak?
Yes, passes 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Quintero. I, 8B is green sheet, green sheet. And the guy with the boot drive's gonna come up here and tell us that he failed. You need more. I heard it was very successful. Oh, no, when, when he gets up, you'll leave, I know. Isn't that right, Michael? George will leave. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, thank you very much, Mayor. Well, good evening, Mayor, council, members of the public. It's nice to see everybody tonight. We appreciate your consideration for this item. Here for you tonight is consideration of the purchase of two new fire engines from our preferred vendor, Pierce Manufacturing, using our local vendor, Golden State Fire Apparatus, to facilitate that purchase, specifically using unrestricted reserves from Measure A. So tonight, we're gonna talk about our proposed proactive replacement plan for Squad 32 and Engine 34. Also in attendance tonight is Operations Chief Mike Harkson with Turlock Fire and Mr. Ryan White, who is the president of Golden State Fire Apparatus, should additional questions arise. All right, so our apparatus fleet, just like any other fire department, has a, has a finite life. And it's our goal to maintain a safe and healthy and reliable fleet so that we can deliver the best service that we possibly can, much like the vehicles that we drive for ourselves, fire engines through normal use, miles, typical wear and tear, the likelihood of the need to receive additional repairs and additional maintenance, and the likelihood that it has to go to the mechanic and get fixed increases. And so part of what we're here to talk about tonight is our goal of implementing an apparatus replacement schedule that's based upon the expected useful service life for our engines, which is in alignment with apparatus fleet management best practices. And it's our belief that a healthy fire apparatus fleet is gonna help us deliver really, really good customer service. So I do want to highlight a significant challenge and a big part of the reason that we're here tonight, but I am gonna follow this up with some very, very actionable solutions that with your support, council, that we've already put in place. And of course, another big one we're looking at tonight. So currently, unfortunately, our fire apparatus fleet is not as operational reliable as we would like it to, we'd like it to be. And it's not uncommon for our engines to be placed in an out-of-service status due to mechanical issues. A frontline engine will be placed out of service, we'll place a reserve in its place. But there is the potential for these challenges with our apparatus fleet to have a negative impact on customer service. If we don't have sufficient reserves that can go in place of our frontline engines, then worst-case scenario, as a station gets browned out, it's downstaffed due to a lack of a suitable apparatus to go in its place, potentially increasing response times to incidents throughout the city. So that's the challenge. Now, the, the good news is, is that we have a number of solutions that are currently in play, and, and we have another big one we're here to discuss tonight. So just really quickly, I just wanted to, to highlight a few things. First, again, council, with your approval, we have entered into a fleet maintenance MOU with the City of Modesto, with their Fleet Services Division. And although that relationship is still pretty new, we've only been doing this for a couple of months, I am happy to report that we're receiving good results from that relationship. We're getting accurate and timely repairs and getting our rigs back in service more quickly and efficiently than we were doing before. So, so far, that relationship is, is working as intended. The second solution that is also currently in place is we've added a bit of bench depth to our reserve fleet. And we've done this in a couple of ways. Recently, we purchased a used fire engine from Salida Fire Protection District. Although this is an older engine, it has relatively few miles. It's an excellent mechanical addition. It looks pretty darn good. And it's been a very, very good addition, a serviceable engine that's been putting use recently as a frontline rig to, to support services here in our community. Also, through our relationship with the City of Modesto, if needed, and as a last resort, we can borrow their reserve apparatus to, again, try to maintain our service through our four stations. In addition, and a significant step for us, is our goal is to replace our apparatus in alignment with our established fleet replacement plan. And our intended goal is that our engines will be in service for a total of 15 years, and that would be 10 years as a frontline piece of equipment and five years as a reserve. So again, a 15-year total service life for each unit. Next, again, with your support and approval, council, we entered into a lease purchase relationship for the purchase of two new Pierce Velocity model of fire engines, and they are expected to be delivered in June of 2024. Supply chain issues have impacted the, the delivery of apparatus like many other things, but there'll be a welcome addition into, to our fleet. And last, and certainly not least, what we're here to talk about tonight is the purchase of two additional Pierce Velocity model of fire apparatus of the same make and model and very, very similar specifications to the ones that were previously approved for, for purchase. So I just wanted to give you a snapshot of where our fleet is today and to highlight where we're going in the near future. So using some of the tools found within the CityGate study, we were able to take a look at the overall health of our fleet. And one of, one of the things that we liked and that we're, we're currently utilizing is a vehicle condition scorecard, which gives consideration not just for the age of the vehicle, but the vehicle's mileage, engine hours, type of service it's used for, reliability, maintenance and repair costs, the overall condition of the vehicle. And from these different criteria, we can come up with a score and compare that to the, to the rest of our fleet. And so before you is a, is a color coding system we use just to make it a little easier to, to review and read. And it reads like this. For vehicles that acquire 20 points or less, they are rated in excellent condition, and we're marking those in the category of green. Vehicles earning between 21 and 30 points are rated in good condition, and we show those in the color of yellow. And vehicles either green or yellow are suitable for frontline service. Vehicles acquiring between 31 and 40 points are suitable for reserve status due to increased frequency and mechanical issues. And vehicles with greater than 40 points are, are qualified for replacement. So that's the scoring rubric. Let's take a look at how that actually looks for our apparatus fleet. So taking a look at the table on the right for our frontline in-service engines and Squad 32, you'll see that Squad 32 and Engine 34, and again, those are the two engines that we are proposing for planned replacement. In our conversation here tonight, those were placed in service in 2017 with 22 and 21 points respectively, and are rated in good condition. On the other hand, Engines 31 and 33 placed in service in 2006, acquired 48 and 46 points respectively, qualifying them for replacement. Now, council, the good news is, is these engines will be replaced. These are the ones that the lease purchase arrangement intends to replace once those engines arrive. So we do have a plan in play to schedule the replacement of those, those engines which, which are, are need to be moved down in the fleet. So our reserve engines are also in, in need of replacement, but keep in mind, if, if we're placing companies in service for 10 years frontline, then those engines will then transition down into our reserve fleet for, for, generally speaking, about five years. So why are we here tonight? I just told you that we have two engines that were purchased in 2017. They're in pretty good shape. There's, there's a few things we want to, to make sure you're aware. And, and the first is our forecasted need is based on this scoring rubric. We're anticipating that these two engines, over the next three to four years, will acquire another 10 or 11 points or so, taking them from the low 20s into the low 30s, qualifying them for reserve status. Now, on, on the positive side, that those point values are right in alignment with where we want it to be and would cycle those engines into reserve status at about the 10-year mark in, in 2027. So we're forecasting that need to, to occur in, in early 2027. The next factor to consider is significant financial impacts within the fire engine industry. And our representatives from Golden State are telling us to plan for conservatively an additional 24% increase in the price of these fire engines over the next three to four years. This combined with other factors about requirements or limited availability of different motor types, the likelihood of, of additional requirements and, and changes in the, in the components that are going in the vehicle, there is the potential for significant increases as we get closer to that planned replacement deadline. Next, and significantly, we are anticipating anticipated delivery, build-out timelines for these units between 38 and a half and 42 and a half months from, from the time we placed, placed the order. So if we were to place the order this month, we would not anticipate delivery of these rigs until September or October of 2026. So you build in some time for training, outfitting of these rigs. It puts us right in the appropriate time to place them frontline service in, in 2027. New engines are also a safer engine as they build out to the more stringent standards of the, of the industry. And so each time we purchase engines, we are afforded the opportunity to make our, our fleet and our firefighters a little bit safer as they drive in these vehicles. And last, but certainly not least, this affords us the opportunity to standardize our fleet. So with the purchase of these two engines of the same make and model, of the Pierce Velocity style of, of fire engine, the training requirements are reduced, the, the, the risk and the, the time it takes to ramp up to learn how to, how to utilize the, the different engines is reduced. And it makes it simpler for our fleet mechanics to work on rigs that, that they're comfortable and familiar with. This, this model of Pierce engine is one of the preferred models that Modesto Fleet works on, and so we have the ability to stock additional parts and have mechanics that are, that are very familiar with these, with these rigs. So that's the, that's the reasons we're, we're having the conversation tonight. This is a, this is not one of Turlock's engines, but this is a near identical engine that we are proposing for purchase, taken on a, on a cold winter day in Appleton, Wisconsin, back at the factory. This one happens to be going to, I gotta read the placard. It's going to the City of Fairfield, another California city with comparable needs to, to our own. Okay, council, as you're aware, we submitted a green sheet for, for this proposal tonight. And the reason for that green sheet is we took, we took a hard look at the payment options, and we realized that we have an opportunity here that, that we initially didn't see. So I'm gonna show you, first is payment option A. This was our original proposal packaged within the original staff report. And what this shows is the cost of each of the two engines, plus an additional allowance for the mounting of, of equipment and a prepayment discount, which we received at the time of order for a little over $149,000. This gives a grand total purchase price of $2,192,491.2. So that was option A. So let's compare this to option B, which is our preferred payment plan for this equipment, and I'll explain why. So I would like to offer our thanks to Councilmember Abram, who asked us to take a different look at some investment opportunities. And so we did so. We sharpened the pencil, and, and we found that we do in fact have a, have a good opportunity that's in front of us. So these extended apparatus delivery times affords us the ability to invest the funds that we would have previously paid at time of, at time of purchase when we signed the agreement. But if instead we make that, that payment at time of delivery, we lose that $149,000 discount for the prepayment purchase, but that investment in a three-year U.S. Treasury note at current annual rate of return of 3.98% would bring in $281,940, which is a little bit more than the $149,000 we would save with the prepayment option. So with this in mind, we're looking at option B as our preferred payment method, and the grand total purchase price for these two engines with estimated delivery in late 2026 would be $2,354,830.35. So that concludes my presentation, and we would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
These, this question's been asked previously in the past. The fire engines are basically designed to fight fires, and yet the majority of the time they're spent on is the EMS issue. Is there any interim way where we could get some other type of vehicle? Maybe you would have an idea about other types of vehicles that could serve the, serve the fire department, serve the citizens of Turlock in an equitable way, but also save us money by having, I don't know where you'd have them, maybe two of the stations have a, an EMS truck that is belong, you know, that Turlock, City of Turlock owns, and instead you know, that Turlock, City of Turlock owns, and instead of taking out a huge fire truck, you could take out the EMS vehicle. Again, I know it's been talked about in the past. I'd just like to know how that would work today and what your thoughts are on it. Thank you.
Thank you for asking the question. So this is an option. It can be done, and there are some fire agencies which do deploy in this way. The challenge with responding, and I'll just use the word squad, or you could say pickup or some other smaller vehicle, is if we deploy in this way and that company is out in the field, and then there is another response that requires the equipment that's found on that engine, there's a significant delay in them returning back to the station to pick up that apparatus and then respond out to whatever the new emergency is. And so if going from a medical aid to a pin-in, an extrication on the freeway, and then in turn they go to a grass fire, and then in turn to a structured fire, each requires a different complement of tools and equipment and specialized gear that they wear to protect themselves in that situation. And so I think the best way to look at a fire engine is it's a gigantic toolbox. Is it an expensive toolbox? Yeah, it really is. We're talking about spending over $1 million per rig tonight. It's very expensive. But it's also an effective and efficient way for us to deliver service. So if we were to look at deploying a two-person model or using a smaller vehicle to medical aids, lift assists, more routine calls, I would recommend it as an additional staffed company within the system, which is in alignment with the recommendations from the City Gate study as well. Thank you for asking the question.
Okay, so I'm in full support of the city getting these new fire trucks. If we need them, we need them there. If it's necessary, that's just what we have to do. And I'm also, I don't like the fact that we're still working with Modesto so closely, but I am glad of the fact that this is the same kind of fire truck. So since we already partner with them, at least we can work up with them together. And if there is issues, right, they can, they'll help us repair them.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming? Okay, that's good. And then also, I'm just curious, how long does the average fire truck actually last? Because the 2017 ones, I believe it was, they were already around the low 20s. And if the time is to get rid of around 40, or as one was, it was the 233, that was 53, I was just curious, how long is the average fire end last? And how long do we expect these ones to last for us here that we're getting out now? Thank you.
Yeah, it's a good question. So it's the responsibility of each fire department to determine the service of life for their equipment. And that's why I really like this scoring rubric that was contained within the City Gate report, because it's not just giving consideration for the actual age of the vehicle, it gives a consideration for the frequency of use and the type of use within our system. And so we're basing our recommendation of a total 15 years of service life on the type of use that we're getting for our engines. So just by way of example, we're putting about 10,000 miles per year, per unit, on the road. And as vehicles acquire more than about 100,000 miles of use, we tend to see them breaking down a little bit more frequently. And so I believe that our recommendation for 15 years is in alignment with what our community needs, and I think the data supports that as well.
Well, I'm going to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Abrams, and I'm glad we're looking in the future on this so we don't give another council a big expense. And I love the fact that you thought about the bonds, investing in advance and that offset being an extra $150,000 to us doesn't hurt. So I'm glad to the chiefs and the city manager for looking forward. And even though these things may be delivered right at the end of, or, you know, sometime in the middle of a term or two, I'm glad that this council is the one that gets to hear it and hopefully say yes to it.
Got a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion. Thank you for the support, everyone.
All right, a motion to second, we call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Booblaq?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Mr. Manager, report updates. Mr. Wilson, what do you got?
No, she's here.
Okay, council items are treated considerations?
Yes. So in alignment with the presentation that we got today from the League of California Cities, I would like to request that this council hear an item where we get to discuss the merits of our membership. You know, it's right now, our membership invoice was invoiced in January. We have not re-upped our membership. I have found in the five months that I've been here that my experience with the League of California Cities has been very valuable. Councilmember Bixel and I were encouraged to attend the new council member meeting by this administration, and I think that shows that there is, the institutional knowledge shows that there is value in this. I had an opportunity to go to another meeting, so I would like to hear us, I would like to hear us make a decision and a determination on our membership status rather than just kind of have it go away through the budget process.
I'll piggyback on that. I found the conference that we attended to be fabulous. I think a little bit with what the presenter was laying out, the strength in numbers when I got, you know, we got to interact with virtually every city in Northern California at that conference. You hear stories back and forth, just this, lots of new people. But I think, again, the strength in numbers, and the last time I, the conversation I had with Mr. Qualls, I think there's only four or five cities in the whole state that are not members of that. And I think that's something we need to really look at.
Yes, I'm looking forward to hearing from Mr. Wilson and Director Moreno. I ask that the transient occupancy tax on the voucher system be looked at to make sure we actually get transient occupancy tax on vouchers for migrants, prisoners, refugees, et cetera, staying in our hotels. I don't know if we do or not. Mr. Wilson wasn't sure. So I'm looking forward to hearing from Director Moreno on whether or not we do.
Yeah, I just wanted to extend a job well done to Mayor Booblaq for the State of Turlock address and a thanks to all the staff that were there and a part of planning for it. I'm sorry, I couldn't join you all. I did have the shoes ready. My daughter decorated them, helped me with them. But I was watching from home for all of you while I was sick. So great job, and thank you to all those involved.
Yeah, shout out. It was fabulous.
And of course, it was fabulous.
Cause you made the shoes.
May is Ride Your Bike Month. The mayor's riding strong. Stephen Frimming's riding strong. I'm riding sort of strong. Get out there, get out there and ride your bike. Farmers' Market every Saturday morning, eight to one. It's fabulous. Join. Makers' Market, it's a new addition to downtown. It's out there on Sundays from 10 to 2. That's where you're going to find crafts and food and vendors and that kind of thing. Third Thursday, we'll be back. June, July, and August at the Turlock Regional Sports Complex, June 15th, July 20th, August 17th, from 5:30 to 8:30, music, food booths, et cetera. And the Cooling Zone at the Transit Center started on May 1st, Monday through Friday, from 6 to 9, and Saturday from 9 to 7.
I'm sorry you were sick, but you were missed at the State of the City. And a good job, Mayor. We got lots of compliments on what a success it was. I'm proud of our city. I'm proud that the out-of-towners and the other cities in our county come and they look at the example that Turlock sets. And thank you to the staff that worked their tails off to pull it off and make it all happen. The update on Columbia Pool, Regan, I'm going to ask you to give us an update in the next one or two council meetings. I need the public to understand that the pool is fully funded. The pool is going to happen. The pool is going to be open by April 1 of next year. And we don't have to wait for specified season because the pool comes with heaters, so the pool can be accessed year-round. So there's a lot of vicious social media. If it's on the internet, it must be true. That is the mentality of some folks. And there's a lot of garbage on the internet, folks. And there's garbage about my pool. So the pool is coming. The pool is really funded. It's really going to happen for real. And we're going to put an update out on the, hopefully, the city's communication network.
Afternoon.
And I want to hear how many miles you've biked.
All done.
Yeah.
178. I have not biked in 25, 26 years, so it was, my backside's feeling it. Anyway, I do want to thank everyone. Staff really stepped up and really like got involved and did the shoes and creative. It was just a super cool vibe. It was actually stepping up for Turlock was Pastor Dave Larson was the one that came up with the title. I just said, listen, this is what I want to do, figure it out. Army, man, she's got lungs. She sung so well. But I just really appreciate everyone coming together and showing everybody how important and how great our community is and walking out with a positive vibe as opposed to just being like, man, we got so many potholes. There's homeless. What are we going to do? Anyway, on to closed session. What do we have? Madam clerk?
For a closed session, we have conference with labor negotiators. California Government Code 54957.6A. Agency designated representative is Deputy City Manager Sarah Eddy. Employee organizations are the Turlock Management Association, Public Safety, and the Turlock Firefighters Association, Local 2434.
All right, we will report out should there be anything. And George, I think they might be in there, so you might not want to go. If Michael's going to be.